Good morning, everyone. We are ready to start our next committee of the day, which is the Committee of the Whole. My name is Elizabeth Glidden. I'm the chair of this committee. And I'm joined today by councilmembers Gordon, Conno, Reich, Bender, Frye, Councilmember Andrew Johnson, Yang, Quincy Goodman, Council President Johnson, Councilmember Linay Palmasano, and Councilmember Abdi Worsami is with his family celebrating the birth of his baby girl. So we have one item for discussion on our agenda today. We have a second item that I will go ahead and take action on right now. It is report back relating to non-hospital residential healthcare enterprises in relationship to the municipal minimum wage. And some work is still going on with that report back. So I'm going to go ahead and move that we postpone that to the meeting of September 19th, 2017. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all in approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. So we'll go now to our major discussion item for today. And I will welcome up a representative from the Health Department. I'm not sure who. Okay, it looks like the Commissioner is coming forward. All right. So we have a report that was directed through a staff direction, I think at the budget time. And so this report is findings by the Youth Cabinet regarding the feasibility of a universal pre-K program. Commissioner.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the committee. I'm Gretchen Musikant, Commissioner of Health. I'm also one of the co-chairs of the Youth Cabinet for the city. And so that's why I'm making this presentation this morning. As you may recall, it was at the time of the budget adoption that a staff direction was given that the city coordinator's office, under which the Youth Cabinet falls, do some investigation and report back to the council about the notion of universal pre-kindergarten programs and to do this in conjunction with work that was also underway in St. Paul. And so we have done quite a bit of scoping of the issue, and that's what we'll be sharing with you this morning. Just a reminder about the Youth Cabinet. Its composition is primarily staff from city departments. And so its scope is wide but not deep. And so that will impact, in part, some of the reporting back that we have for you this morning. Having said that, I think I then will turn it over to Nigel Perrow, who is our Youth Development Coordinator at the Health Department, is also our staff support person for the Cabinet.
Thank you so much. And welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner Musikant. Thank you, Madam Chair, City Council Committee. First off, I'd just like to give us some additional background on top of what our Commissioner just presented. For the purpose of this work, we were trying to set a baseline initially and looking at some of the things that are available around early childhood programming as it relates to universal pre-K. One of the things we looked at was Parent-Aware Rankings, which is a system that looks at individual organizations throughout Minnesota on how they rate on a four-star system. And so that did give us a lot of opportunity to look at where our capacity is at or where we're at in terms of a baseline. And so that's based off individual organizations versus kind of our systemic or system-level overall approach. In addition to that, part of our work with the Health Department is participation in City Health Coalition, which through the DeBolmont Foundation was looking at different rankings across all the member cities that are part of City Health and looking at just their overall rankings as it relates to health-related items. And one of the items that they were looking at was universal pre-K. Those rankings came back very late last month. And overall, the city did get a silver ranking, but as it relates to the universal pre-K program, we did not rank on that. At this time, we're not sure what went into that decision, but we are hoping to follow up on that at a later date to kind of see what they did in terms of how we ranked and what our score overall was. In addition to these kind of baseline activities we did in terms of building where we're going, where we're at, where we're going, we also met with Generation Next, which is one of the largest stakeholders as it relates to data around universal pre-K programming. And so they provided us a lot of good data to look at and kind of fill in some of the gaps that were missing, that we weren't able to pull from the Parent-Aware or the DeBolmont City Health Rankings. And then we also met with the St. Paul contingency working on this opportunity as well as part of the staff directive. It did have a piece in there that we would look at, what St. Paul is doing, and work with them. So we met with Lori Davis and Krista Anderson, the St. Paul Children's Collaborative, and I just want to give them a special shout-out because this whole presentation was based off the format they were looking at. And so we were just able to put our numbers. So that was really helpful in terms of kind of presenting the information we have today. On top of that, in these meetings, I was also assisted by Anna Groot from the YCB, who's back here today. And then at the time, when she was still with the mayor's office, Angela Watts gave us some pretty good information and some details in terms of where we're moving and where we should look towards. And then most recently, Lauren Robinson, who took her place as the cradle of the K policy aide. So just some basic facts again in terms of building the baseline. At any given time, in one cohort, there's about 5,400 children that may go through on a yearly basis. Out of all the children living in Minneapolis, about 30% live 100% below the federal poverty definition. 49% live below 185% poverty. And then 23% of children under the age of six live at 500% above poverty. Overall, families in Minneapolis, about 70.8% of families work overall. And some of that information, I'll kind of touch on to the next point. But overall, in Minneapolis, we have about 32,355 children under the age of six living in Minneapolis. About 33% of our between the ages of three and four typically where universal pre-K programming impacts.
We have a question before you move on to your next slide.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Councilmember Frye.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. So I'm just looking at these percentages, 30% below 100% of poverty. Is 100, does 100% of poverty mean that baseline statistic as to what constitutes poverty? So then 185% of poverty would be better than 100% poverty or worse than 100% poverty?
185% would be worse, better than.
So 185% poverty would be, so you do it like similar to area median income? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
And I should say that the definition of poverty is a yearly formula, so it looks different from year to year. Part of the way that St. Paul, in looking at their format and then doing this, they were really thinking about a focused approach in their universal pre-K and really thinking about who are, who in that pot of three- to four-year-olds would be most likely in need of universal pre-K. The definition of universal pre-K varies, but typically, I think a lot of people think about early childhood learning centers as it relates to universal pre-K programming. One of the things as we were going through this process and learning about that, it's important to realize that, as I mentioned before in that statistic, about 70.8% of parents work full-time. So a lot of universal pre-K programming is usually half-day. And so part of the other half of the day is figuring out under these different kind of slots that are available in terms of other programming, like licensed family care, other childcare programming, or other school-based or Head Start-based programming that has to make up the day of those at-age, school age of three-to-four-year-olds. And so saying that this is the one specific thing that is a universal pre-K programming is probably not the best way to approach this because there are other programming in terms of early childhood programming that parents oftentimes make use of as it relates to daycare overall. So overall, there's, with some difficulty getting these numbers of slots, but what we were able to estimate was between 10,000 and 52 and 10,202 slots are available as it relates to early childhood programming in this citywide. As it relates to the Parent-Aware Rankings of the childcare programming, 78 agencies rank at 44% of either a three- or four-star. And then of licensed family programming, 25 agencies or 13% of total agencies rank at a three-to-four-star programming. It's important to recognize too that if we're thinking about these slots, we have to make sure that they're quality slots. As it relates to Parent-Aware, they go from a one-star to a four-star ranking. So it's more likely that we want more three- and four-star rankings than we do want one- and two-star rankings. In relation to kind of what funding is currently out there, this relates to a variety of different things, including Head Start, Child Care Assistance Program, or CCAP, Pathway Scholarships, and School-Based Clinics. We estimate about $37 million already are out there providing subsidies for, again, those students that are at the poverty level or below.
We have another question for you, Council President Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the school-based programs, are we talking about Minneapolis Public Schools? And then I guess my question is, does that include like the High Five? And I'm not a, you know, knowledgeable about this at all, but, and then did with the original legislation about pre-K, did Minneapolis Public Schools get some of that funding that came through the state on the initial go-round of pre-K?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Councilmember Johnson, the school-based programs are the High Five Programings that operate through Minneapolis Public Schools. In relation to your second question, I'm not sure what in terms of legislation came through.
Well, my understanding is that there has been some funding in previous legislatures recently to begin the pre-K work across the state, and some districts applied. And there's a waiting list of districts, obviously, that would like to have that. And then my curiosity about the High Five is, is that, how does a child get prioritized for High Five? Is it an income-based qualification or is it a, you know, locational? What's the criteria about how you get into High Five?
Madam Chair, Councilmember Johnson, one of the things I forgot to mention as it relates to the statewide efforts recently in the last legislation, the Office of the Legislative Auditor did get some money to look at, an overall audit of early childhood programming, which includes not just universal pre-K programs, but any kind of relation, anything in relation to early childhood programming, so like home visiting. So the purpose of this was to kind of do five key things as it relates to kind of deciding, determining what is the gaps and also kind of looking at what is the overall system as it relates to universal pre-K or, I'm sorry, early childhood programming. So the purpose is to kind of figure out the usage, how many of these programs actually meet their objectives, what is the extent of collaboration and coordination between programming, then also where are the duplications or where can augmentation be as it relates to current programming? And then again, like I mentioned before, the gaps. So that's kind of what I, my extent of what happened within the most recent legislation happened. I could reach out to some of the partners that we met with and kind of see if there was any additional funding, and then also talk with our policy person as well at the Health Department to see if they had any additional questions.
Thank you. That's just fine. I, you know, I only know what I read in the newspaper, so thank you.
And then in terms of the High Five, it is an income-based programming, so it varies again depending on where they rate in the federal poverty guidelines. So some parents may get a full portion of their, the cost paid, so on this next slide, it's cost estimates. But so typically, for per student, it's $4,320 per student per year. And so that could either be paid fully, or it could be paid partially by the schools, and then the additional piece would be paid by the parents. In terms of how they figure out the waitlist, I'm not too sure on that. This was one of the programs, it was very difficult to kind of get some more information out of. But it's something, I think, as we move forward and kind of think about our next steps, I think there's some more work that we can do around figuring out more specifics with that.
We have another question or comment from Councilmember Quincy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a quick question, Nigel. On the calendar year, I imagine the school-based programs are during the school year. Are the other programs year-round, or is there a disparity between the type of program and when they're offered to students?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Councilmember Quincy, I believe High Five does operate on the school year. In terms of other programming, they typically operate year-round. So looking at the cost estimates, this is kind of hard to pin down because a lot of times the costs per year are based off what the rankings are as it relates to Parent-Aware. So one-star Parent-Aware program could charge less, while a four-star Parent-Aware program could be theoretically charging more. So again, looking back at some of these kind of slots that we were able to identify as part of the capacity and what's available now. An early childhood learning center could potentially cost $12,000 per year. Family childcare centers could cost up to $9,464 per year. Head Start was a hard number to pin down, but from our understanding, it could cost anywhere from $85,000 to $10,000 per year. And then, as I mentioned before, school-based programming or the High Five as it relates to Minneapolis Public Schools could cost $4,320 per year. And then in relation to the Head Start and the High Five numbers, those are outside funding that typically funds that. So High Five is typically funded through the Department of Education at the state level, and then federal dollars go into the Head Start programming. So again, as I mentioned, those programs are typically based on income. So even though, in most cases, a family might not be paying anything, that's still dollars that are going into the current amount of funding that is being dedicated towards these So based off these cost estimates, what we were able to do and kind of what St. Paul looked at it is that out of the total of children in Minneapolis ages three to four, we have about 10,785. We assume that 85% of them will take us up on our offer for universal pre-K, and the other 15% will say either no, or we have it figured out. And so kind of taking a cost estimate based on a range of numbers from 8,000 to 12,000, we have the total as it relates to 10,000-plus children, and then the total as it relates to 85%, 85% are the 8,000 children that would take us up on universal pre-K. So as you can see, at the lowest level of $8,000 per year per children, if we did do universal pre-K for all children, it could potentially cost $86 million per year. Out of the 85% that could potentially take us up on our offer, we could see as low as $64 million per year. And at the high end, as you see, is $12,000 per children per year. If we did universal pre-K for all children ages three to four, it would be $130 million per year potentially. And then again, with the 85% that could potentially take us up on our offer, it would be about $97 million per year. So looking at our funding gap, this number that we, that we came up with, this $27 million to this $93 million, that is our last number. So the 60, the lowest number that we figured, 64 million, and the highest number that we figured, 130 million minus the 37 million estimated available funding so far. In addition to this, the access and the tuition, we also have to think about the capacity as it relates to the different programmings and what it could potentially cost for those programmings. And a lot of this information and a lot of what they need in terms of their capacity is again in relation to the Parent-Aware program. So typically, the things that a program would have to consider as they are doing their programming is the cost for administration, the cost for quality improvement, the cost for evaluation, the cost for enrollment supports, and the cost for outreach and communication. So we, based on what St. Paul was able to figure out, they figured about 20% in addition to that 27 to $93 million would be necessary to roll out. So in our total gap is the 27 plus the 20% of 27, and then the 93 plus the 20% of 93 million. So we could be looking at anywhere between a $32 million and $111 million gap as it relates to universal pre-K programming implemented in Minneapolis. I'd like to ask the Commissioner Musikant to come back up to finish this off with this last slide.
Thank you, Nigel.
Oh, I'm sorry. There is one more person with a question. I guess this is probably a little bit more for Nigel, but Councilmember Bender, sorry about that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to thank you for the work you've done. And I had met with some constituents about this when we first started talking about it in the budget. And they had given me some information about other cities that have implemented universal pre-K. So I just wanted to note from my very basic knowledge of this that several cities used funding sources that were new funding sources. So those were some pretty big numbers you showed us. And I imagine if we thought about incorporating that into our property tax levy, we might think that that's, you know, a very significant change. But I know that Philadelphia funds their program through a sales tax on soda. We have a lot of health advocates here who might be interested in that idea. I know that San Antonio funds it through a very small portion of a sales tax. It was like 1/8 of a cent sales tax that the voters, I think, approved on a ballot. So I just wanted to throw that out there just and see if you had any other examples of funding sources. Again, since those numbers sound very high for something that we could probably fund through our property tax, particularly considering that our schools have such a deficit right now, but wanted to just note that so maybe we keep our mind open to other ideas.
Madam Chair, Councilmember Bender, I know St. Paul was looking at a property tax and also at both the city level and the county level. So I don't think that is necessarily in concrete for them in terms of where they're going, but I know that the ones that you mentioned were kind of the ones they also looked at in terms of Philadelphia. And a lot of what they were doing was also looking at kind of how Denver has instituted universal pre-K program, which I believe is through property taxes, if I'm not mistaken. But I know one of the things I've heard about Philadelphia, though, is that it has some unintended consequences in terms of a lot of, because of the soda tax, it's, people are drinking less soda now, so their product is less, and so that has caused them to have to fire a lot of people. So I think in terms of kind of as we do this programming and we think about moving forward, I think we always have to be careful of the unintended consequences. I know one of the things that was also brought up as it relates to some of the work that Anna Groot has been doing is that there's also a fear too that this could offset daycare costs overall. And so I think a lot of people probably know that as it relates to like infants in childcare, those are probably the highest costs as it relates to all-day childcare. And then if we were able to provide that, the, what they would leverage from their other age children would have to be higher because then, or the cost for childcare for infants would go up because they have this, a lot of parents will now have this free opportunity. And so it'd be more of an expense for infant care as it relates to children of other ages because we would be providing this fully, potentially fully-funded system of free childcare. So that's, I think, something we've have looked at some other areas and we are, we are always worried about, or at least we try to take into consideration any unintended consequences and understanding that this would likely have to be a phased program moving forward, or more considerations would have to be taken of what is the best approach. Thank you.
Looks like we might have another question or comment. I'll just kind of add in on the funding source. I don't know if some of it is unintended consequences so much as how do you look at a new source of funding and really think about what's the sustainability of it, knowing there might be fluctuations over time? You know, so I think of that more as the, what's the financial modeling that then supports the programming? Just the other point is that, you know, each state is unique in what authority different cities have to access different funding sources. And so there might also be, you know, again, what is the role of the state in giving a local authority? Or if the state, which has been considering this itself, kind of comes through on what is a crisis, I'll just say, for so many people in being able to access appropriate, safe, affordable care that's quality. So Council President Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I really appreciate your bringing up this dilemma that could ensue if we have publicly-funded preschool, which could replace daycare for the, they don't call them toddlers, they're the little, the older group, the butterflies or whatever. That's what I know. But, but all of these daycares, depending on, you know, whether they're family daycare or a center daycare, their economic model is based on having that older group in the mix, pre-K, in the mix, that allows them to subsidize the infant care. And so anybody who's had a little, you know, had their kids go to daycare or grandchildren go to daycare, hear how much infant care costs. And infant care costs, if you take out that part of the model, the infant care costs will skyrocket, both in family daycare as well as center-based daycare. The other thing I want to point out about St. Paul is St. Paul right now is currently trying to figure out how to come up with a $30 million gap in their property tax that they have to levy across the city because of the challenges that they've encountered because of the method that they've been using to charge for street work. And so the thought of adding something to their property tax, I think, would be quite controversial in addition to the gap that they're going to have to figure out how to fund now. So anyway, thank you. And I, again, appreciate it. I think the perspective about when you, when you go to one, you know, act on one part of the system, that it has impacts across the system is, really needs to be fully thought through.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think this last discussion is really a great reinforcement for the point at which we find ourselves, which is, the Youth Cabinet has begun the scoping of this. There are so many details left to work on that we think it's an appropriate time to bring it back to you and to say that we probably need another body to think more deeply about this that's configured in a different way with some expertise in the early childhood arena. And so we also have, in watching St. Paul and their effort to look at this, see the utility in having some minimal resourcing available to, to help with either research or modeling. There are some folks out there who we've learned from St. Paul that will do some financial modeling and also to engage in some community engagement around this, this topic, since it will, you know, potentially, if we move forward, will involve and would benefit from the community being involved in this consideration. And so we are bringing this information to you and then suggest that you may wish to, at some point, craft a more detailed resolution, perhaps based on what St. Paul will soon be issuing as their first draft, and what the Legislative Auditor might help us understand, which will be early in 2018. And along with that, a creation of some kind of advisory group with an array of expert group with an array of expertise. So that is our recommendation that you can consider at your leisure.
So we have a few more councilmembers. I will say everybody kind of like came in at once, so I think Andrew Johnson, I think, is first, and then Councilmember Palmasano and Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have a question about the Park Board's REC+ program, and if there's been thought around partnership with them for extending that out and being able to utilize that existing infrastructure that's in place and those services as a way of working towards something like this.
Madam Chair, Councilmember Johnson, I think that consideration would, would be well-suited to be studied by this more in-depth group. Really, the, the idea is to look at and understand clearly what resources we have here, both in capacity and existing financial commitment, and then to build on that rather than to replace it or push it out of the way. So I think that's a, that's a very helpful consideration and should be considered.
Thank you, I appreciate that, and that's one thing I'd love, love to get my pitch in for more partnership with the Park Board on that and leveraging that existing infrastructure. I mean, just thinking about how community-centered our parks already are and how close they are in proximity to so many families, I think it's a great opportunity for collaboration.
Councilmember Palmasano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to remind everybody that we took this on in collaboration with St. Paul, and I want to thank you all for entertaining this and fairly late in last year's budget cycle. As Director Musikant started this presentation off, this look was wide but not very deep. So here's what I saw when, when I spoke, sat with them yesterday and we went through this presentation. I want to acknowledge the things that we've achieved in this. One of the things we've achieved in this is doing the sizing and scoping of this idea, which we didn't know before. It was, it was more of just an idea, and it was a big idea. This is a first brush of how big an investment here would be needed, and I realized we have to now narrow this in order to go forward in some way. We would need a prioritization of how to connect maybe short-term things with, with this as a longer-term goal. So, so I would suggest that we wait. I would suggest that this time of waiting is an intentional act, considering, again, maybe early to mid next year, that's after the Legislative Auditor would have an opportunity to take a look across the state at the different kinds of capacities and just different things that, that we have. So this is a really big idea, and I want to thank you for your initial exploration of it. A little, especially poignant to me and what we got out of this, we understand the overall capacity of building this out in, in some of the different ways that seem logical. We, we sit with how do we step forward now with a reasonable idea, and I look forward to St. Paul's blueprint, which I understand will be out for them at the end of August because they've approached this big idea in a slightly different way. So I, I just wanted to say thank you for this effort, thank you for your support in exploring this as a pre-K initiative, and that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much, Madam Vice President, and I appreciate the report. I have to say that I'm very excited by the concept of a pre-K or a 3K, as New York City has called their effort. I think New York is a great model to look at. They're rolling it out slowly, district by district, with partnerships and relying on state and federal funding for a lot of it. So that's something to look at. When this first came up, I was very, very excited about the possibility of what we could do in Minneapolis. I think if we're serious about closing certain disparities in our city, this is a way to, to do it. I think there's gaps across the city in different populations and locations, and the evidence is undeniable, the quality early childhood education can make a major difference later. One thing we haven't looked at here is actually what savings there would be maybe later on, what benefits there might be later on. I will also admit, when I got the first report and saw a figure like $93 million, I was discouraged. I just wanted to kind of throw in the towel, walk out the door and say, huh, no way. But I think that there's potential still, and there's also middle ground between saying we're going to pay, we're going to do universal pre-K for everybody who needs it in, in this age group, you know, all 10,000 of them today or something like that. And certainly, other cities that have tried it are stepping into it slowly and carefully. It's hard for me to intentionally wait on something that I'm eager and excited about and think the evidence shows support for, but I also appreciate some sense of slowing down. I will say that I, I think this is something worth talking about. Even if we're waiting a little bit, we can still be doing research on our own, we can be planting seeds, we can be talking to St. Paul. As my colleagues know, I also serve on the Youth Coordinating Board and am Chair of it right now. This is, I think, if anything was going to happen about this, we need to talk to our partners at the schools, the parks, and the county and see what makes sense. Often at those meetings, we do talk about this, the pre-K and what are we going to do about youth. We're also aware there's big problems in after-school programming and funding, and there's all these things to balance, kind of as a region. So I think I'll keep planting seeds there and, and talking there, and also with St. Paul and Ramsey County and see what is the interest here. I'll also note that it will probably take a lot of community members to get involved and interested in this and figure out, is this something really important that we want for our city? Do we want to make sure that when you're three, you can get to a quality early childhood program that's going to set you up for success when you get to school in third grade and graduate from high school and then becoming a participating member of our community? And I think it does set you up in that trajectory. And I think there's a way to do it that we can also honor those high-quality family daycare homes and the whole mix, but it's complicated, it's difficult. We found that out. Thank you for this report. And now I'm, let's, let's not give up, but I'm not, I'm not prepared with the resolution right now to set up the next phase of it, but I'll be thinking about that and look forward to working with colleagues who are interested up here moving forward. Thank you.
All right. We have two more, and I'm confused who was first, Councilmember Frye and then Councilmember Quincy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to point out that this gap that we're talking about is actually not exorbitant. I mean, it's, it's, it is 32 million to 111 million. If you split the difference, it falls somewhere in the range of 70. It's not like we haven't done things before that require that amount of money, and if you look at how other cities have set it up, whether it's a referendum out of California or a soda tax out of, out of New York, or I believe it's actually a marijuana tax in Denver, although I could be wrong, and they're raising a lot of money, far in excess of 32 million, even at once accounting for the per capita difference between the cities. So I mean, you know, when we talk about doing things to help the, the general welfare and the bottom-line pocketbook of our city, I think this is a big step.
Councilmember Quincy.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Madam Chair, for bringing this and putting this on the agenda for discussion. Obviously, a lot of people are interested in this topic. I appreciate when it came out as part of the Budget Staff Direction. We were looking for a report back, I think it was in September, or something like that. So it was really important, as I've been a part of the Youth Cabinet since its beginning and meeting every month on this topic, to start hearing from folks like Anna Groot over at YCB, what's going on in other cities, what's going on with the scoring. So I really compliment the, the staff, especially the Health Department staff and Nigel specifically, about gathering and scoping this work for the first time, trying to put our arms around it. This, you know, the outside cost of this represents about a third of our general fund. So I think, yeah, it's a lot of money, and yes, we've done big things for big money, but I think we're all going to have to realize that, that the tolerance for how much we can do and what our role is and what other people are doing, what the consequences would be of, you know, daycare centers, all needs to be looked at as part of this. So absolutely, it's important to talk about it now, so it's not part of the budget discussion. A lot more work needs to happen on this, so I'm talking about your further study and finding out what the Legislative Audit Department is thinking about with the city of St. Paul. So these are all important aspects that we need to consider, because the output and the outcome is really important to think about. What are we doing about our kids? What are we doing about our city and our education system? What's the role in the city in playing that? Is it part of the state role? Is it part of the federal role? Is it part of the park board relationship? All those answers would be yes. So we just have to consider this carefully, moving it forward. So I know this is just a receive-and-file item on this, but it was really important to bring it up so we could start talking about it as a group. How big of a priority is it? The other thing we're talking about is where should this be looked at? Because the Youth Cabinet, as we established it, was specifically charged with an internal view of putting a youth lens on our work from our department's perspective. It doesn't include youth. It's not about youth, it's about our work for our youth in the city enterprise. But as we were coming up on the budget, this is the logical place for it, it's in the Coordinator's Department, and it's not something that we could, we couldn't impose this kind of study, or this staff direction on, for example, the mayor's staff as part of the cradle decay, or we couldn't impose it on YCB. So I really appreciate, I think it was Councilmember Johnson, or maybe Councilmember Gordon, of course, as being the Chair of YCB, that this should be looked at as part of our work. I think we're going to have to realize our definition of universal is going to have to change because we can't afford universal free coverage for everybody, but is it appropriate to stack it with priorities and needs or geographic or outcomes? So those are the work that's best handled by multi-jurisdictional partners, so I appreciate the fact that it should be part of the YCB considerations. So nothing more except those, those comments, no specific questions, Commissioner, but I appreciate the work the Health Department put into this and the Youth Cabinet's focus on it for the past several months and bringing it forward early enough that we could make a decision or at least a recommendation as it relates to the upcoming budget, which we're about to start talking about in a matter of two weeks. So thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right. That is all that we have in terms of council comments. I will say thank you very much for the information. I believe our action is just to receive and file, so I'll go ahead and move that. On approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that is it. Thank you very much. We now have our reports of committees, and we will work through those. The first is Councilmember Goodman with Community Development and Regulatory Services.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Community Development and Regulatory Services is bringing 14 items through for approval on Friday. Item number one is a bond issuance for an affordable housing project at 1500 Nicollet. Item two is a PACE energy financing project at a coffee shop in northeast. Item three is a development assistance program land sale in north Minneapolis, as is item number four. Item five is the larger Minneapolis Homes Development Assistance land sales. There's about 10 land sales in item number five, they're all noted below. There were public hearings on all of those. Item number six is Business Made Simple Temporary Alcohol Licenses for Events Ordinance. Item seven are the regular liquor business and gambling licenses. Item eight are license operating conditions for Asia Taste. Item nine, business licensing operating, business license operating conditions for a build, a business on West Broadway. Item number 10 is the same thing for the Uptown Market. 11, same thing for DIN Auto. 12, granting exclusive development rights for the Snelling Yards project at 3601 East 44th for two years. Item 13 is a subscription service agreement for employment projects with Employ Milwaukee. And item 14 is business rental license conditions for a property in north Minneapolis. With that, I'm happy to answer questions on items one through 14.
Thank you. Next, we have Elections and Rules with Councilmember Frye.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have one item on the agenda for this Friday, which is just increasing the number of polling locations we have throughout the city. Happy to stand for any questions.
All right, thank you. Next, we have Health, Environment, and Community Engagement with Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much, Madam Vice President. The Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee is bringing one item forward for consideration on Friday. It's the Tobacco Sales Ordinance. This is the amendment to our flavored tobacco ordinance that will take away the exemption to menthol, wintergreen, and mint flavors to restrict their sales of all flavored tobacco products to tobacco product shops. I will note that the committee made two adjustments or changes. First, they amended the ordinance proposal itself to kind of respond, I think, to concerns about access to tobacco, and the amendment that passed made it so that the section did not apply to licensed off-stale liquor stores with regard to menthol, mint, or wintergreen-flavored tobacco products, and provided that such establishments that do not permit any persons under the age of 21 to be present within them unaccompanied by a parent or guardian could continue to sell those products. And then the other action we took was a staff direction, and we directed our staff not to begin enforcement of this until August 1st, 2018, thus giving 12 months for those people engaged in this kind of business to make a transition, to sell off or somehow dispose of their supply and work on how they could adjust their business plan. And then we also moved to direct the City Coordinator's Office and Economic Development staff to work with the Health Department and to find ways to support convenience stores and corner stores in making a successful transition to complying with the new provisions. And I'll stand for questions, and that was a mouthful for one item, but some of those decisions just got made a few minutes ago, and I thought I'd provide all the details.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any discussion right now, just double-checking. So next, we have Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management with that committee's chair, Councilmember Yang.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. For the Public Safety Committee, we have seven items. The first item is Minnesota Board of Firefighter Training Education Training Academy reimbursement for cadet training. Second item is a contract amendment. Third item is community engagement grants from Target. Fourth item is a grant application for the, for the DOJ, for the Police Department. The fifth item is a contract amendment for a contract with Minneapolis Public Schools where SROs. The sixth item is a contract with Horseman, Inc., for patrol horse boarding services. And the seventh item is probably the, I guess, marquee item for this time around, and it's just an audit of the Minneapolis Police Department's mobile and body worn video recording equipment programs. And there were some, or minor amendments to it at the Ways and Means Committee, and I don't know if Councilmember Quincy wants to speak to that, but I certainly can just let you know that that has happened.
All right, thank you very much. Next, we have Transportation, Public Works with Councilmember Ray.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The committee will be forwarding 12 items. All items are activities of the department, with the exception of item two, which is Regulation of Small Cell Wireless Facilities and City-Owned Infrastructure, and that is an amendment to be consistent with recent legislation at the State Capitol. I'll stand for questions.
Thank you. Next, Ways and Means, Councilmember Quincy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just first off, I just wanted to comment on the item from Public Safety that Councilmember Yang just referenced. It was their item number seven. The only amendment was the change on the funding source for the, for the appropriation, so appropriately done. So thank you for that willingness to take on that amendment, Councilmember Yang. The Ways and Means Committee will bring forward six additional items for consideration on Friday. The first is a legal settlement. Item number two is the acceptance of the only bid for the Minneapolis Convention Center parking ramp intercom system upgrade. We also have a lease with Sprint for cellular equipment on Kenwood Water Tower. We have a contract amendment with Classic Space for specialized equipment storage. Item number five is a lease with Minneapolis Grain Exchange for Public Works office space. And the final item is a memorandum of understanding with the Hennepin County for exchange of internal audit services. Happy to answer any questions on those six items.
Thank you very much. I'm not seeing questions. Next, or excuse me, last, we have Zoning and Planning with its chair, Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have four items of zoning and planning. One is granting an appeal for a variance at 4415 Fremont Avenue South. This is just about a detached garage. Item number two was denying an appeal for 2863 East Lake of the Isles Parkway. That was about a steep slope. Item number three is a rezoning for a building with 184 dwelling units in, on Nicollet Avenue. And item number four is passage of an ordinance that amends our code related to yard and step-back requirements in non-residential zoning districts. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. So with that, I believe we have concluded with all of our business for today. Thank you all very much, and thank you to everyone who stayed for all of the meeting, and we are adjourned. Thank you very much.